Are we okay?
Downwind.
And do the public hearing, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna go back and, uh, I guess we're now muted, unmuted, we're good?
Oh, we're in muted.
We're in muted report, okay, so let's go back and let's have the, uh, so visitor citizens forum, Linda, no one signed up to speak?
No one signed up.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is scheduled on the Christian annexation of A 309A Dixon Outfont. Did anyone sign up to speak for the public hearing?
No one registered to speak.
Okay, so Serena has made a motion to close the public hearing. Eric has the second, all those in favor?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, consent agenda, all these are, uh, minutes from September 10th, November 12th, reappointment of our presiding judge, our miscourts judge, who has a two-year term, which coincides with mine. So, the thing I did notice in the minutes was there seems to be a pattern that every time we adjourn, Councilwoman Lutley seems to be leading the motions. It's one thing I noticed in the minutes, so, but...
Pattern there, huh?
It's just a pattern that I seem to have picked up on. Okay. All right, so I've Matt this with the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I think it's...
Serena's got the second, all right, so Serena on the second, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, next up, we have regular jet, a consideration of variance for 820 Kerry Lane, front-facing garage, right, this is in your packet, this is your house going in on 820 Kerry, as is normal with these, he's got a standard three-car garage, side entry, J swing, et cetera, um, they wanna have a front-facing garage in the back of the house, we've talked about this before, basically, you know, we have choices, if we, if we don't allow that, then they just pour a pad and they park the boat right out in the open, or whatever it is they wanna put in there, you know, the stuff, so, we determined in the past, it's better for everybody if we enclose it, make it look nice, make it look like part of the house, put a nice door on the front.
It's not their primary garage.
They have, they have a code compliant garage, that is a J hook, that meets everything, this is an auxiliary, it's an auxiliary garage that's past the house, so, we've done many of these before.
Uh, make a motion to approve?
Ms. Serena has the motion to approve the variance, Eric has the second, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, the second variance here is for 327 Peninsula. Um, this is, again, a front-facing garage on Peninsula, this one is one of the smaller lots, only 70 feet wide, they tried to come in with a side swing garage, I saw the plans, I told them to give it up, that you can't get there from here with a 25, or 28-foot swing, 25-foot deep garage, 7-foot setbacks, just give it up. Um, the lot's only 70 feet wide, um, I sent them back to the drawing board and they come back with a more normal stock, straight-in, which is similar to the one on the other side of the street.
There's not that many, not that, not that many front-facing there anyway, so we have the variety.
Yeah, exactly, the other ones on the other side are 90 foot wide, so they've got an extra 20 feet, they're side swing. Um, but this one is literally the poster child for a variance, it's only 70 feet wide.
It's just a wide guy against the benefit.
Yeah, he just got squeezed, you know, so, all right?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
Okay, Matt made the motion to approve, Eric's got the second again, all right, all those in favor? Thank you very much, all right, next up on the agenda, we have consideration, oh, I'm sorry, presentation of our 2019-2020 audit with Mr. Wayne Neighbors of Neighbors CPA. Before Wayne starts, I wanna say one thing, um, this audit, uh, you know, when you do a big project like the roads, it'd be really nice if you can start it and end it in the same year, you can open up stuff and close them, that never happens, so, what it means is that for this year, Wayne had to do a lot of work setting up temporary accounts and setting up temporary funds, because we started it this last year and we're gonna finish it this year. So he did all that work to set it all up, and that's what happens with accounting, when he does this year's audit, he's gonna turn around and undo everything he set up, and it's all gonna go back down to zero again. Um, but it's a lot of work for this year and I appreciate it, I know Wayne spent a lot of extra time on it, um, and, you know, it's a little bit, you know, it's, it's just a lot more stuff than in our normal audit. So Wayne, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Mayor, Council, Wayne Neighbors, Neighbors and Services, it's an honor, it's a pleasure to be with you, uh, to present your audit report. Uh, you know, Mayor talking about the roads and all the extra work that goes into governmental accounting and presenting financial statements in a proper annual act, um, you know, you guys have done an excellent job of navigating some very complex times with the bond issuances and all the construction and, and things that go with that, um, so I applaud the fact that you have been able to manage this process so effectively. Uh, if you've got your audit report there, it's a blue, blue binder there, page 1, we'll start with the independent audit report. There are actually four sections to this report. The first section just basically defines the scope of the audit, which is the, the year, fiscal year ended September 30th of 2020. The second section defines the management's responsibility, and what I mean by that is the presentation and, uh, the financial statements in general are the responsibility of, is it, uh, they're not my responsibility, that's their responsibility of management, and that is, that is, uh, you're responsible for preparation and the fair presentation, and I probably spend a lot of time going through and making sure that all of your funds are in the proper order and that we're showing all of the activity the way that they're supposed to be shown in governmental accounting, so that anybody that picks these financial statements up can see that they are in accordance with generally accepted county principles and that they're adhering to government county standards. The third section defines my responsibility, uh, I have a responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statements based on my audit basis. Now, I plan and will perform my audit in accordance with generally accepted audit standards. I plan my audit to obtain reasonable, but not absolute assurance. Uh, we use sampling a lot, uh, we, everything on the balance sheet is audited, substantial, that means we test all balance sheet balances, uh, every transaction is tested. But when it comes to revenues and expenditures, the time required to test every transaction would be overwhelming and the expense would be astronomical to the city. So there's a, there's a thing called immateriality in auditing, and so that's where sampling and doing analytical review year-over-year comes in, uh, so that we don't have to necessarily go and test every transaction. And then the next section is the opinion paragraph, and this is the most important part of the whole audit, says in my opinion, the financial statements refer to the numbers and fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities and each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information that we've delivered as of September 30th of 2020. So what this means is, you have a clean auditing in this year, so you're being congratulated.
Fortune or wrong?
Fortune or wrong. Uh, okay, let's, we're gonna flip over, uh, I'm happy to come back and answer any questions you have, but I wanted to make sure that I cover some summary information with you, uh, that you'd be most interested in. On page 15, we have what's called a balance sheet, governmental, uh, balance sheet. And what we're looking at here are two things, basically. One is your reserve balance.
I'm sorry, Wayne, could you repeat what page you're on?
Page 15.
15, I'm sorry, thank you.
Your, uh, uh, and we look at two things, we look at your reserve balance, and the way that we calculate your reserves is we take the amount of fund balance marked as on us fine, which in this case you can see is $605,000 to $925,000, and we take that as a percentage of your total expenditures. Now, your total expenditures, overall page 17, are your sacred revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balances. Now, about halfway down the page, far right in column, you see a $2,471,435. However, principal paid-on debt of $163,000 comes out of that, and your capital outlay comes out of that, because that is a capital expenditure that, going to full accrual accounting, has to be capitalized and appreciated, so it's not a true expenditure. If you take those out, your total operating expenses, $341,000. Well, $605,000, that's a percentage of that is 177%. And we recommend 25% in the general fund as a good reserve amount. So if you can see, uh, 177%, you are well above the recommended reserve value. Now, that, somebody might say, well, you've got too much money in the bank. Well, the thing is, you never know, especially in a town where you've got growth occurring, you've got new development, uh, you never know what you're gonna run up to unexpectedly. So it doesn't hurt to have some extra reserve on hand, uh, you're, you're more, you're within your right to have a planned spend out of some of that reserve at some point, if you'd like to do that, there's absolutely nothing wrong with it. So you're in a very, very strong cash position. The other thing we look at is called a current ratio, and what this does is measure your ability to pay your bills, it, it is your current assets divided by your current liabilities. And we look at the general fund only on this particular portion, and your, your current ratio, you look at your current assets in the general fund, $653,000, current assets are $6,800, so that is a ratio of 95 to 1. Our recommendation is 1 to 1. So, you guys, what this means is you've got great liquidity, all right, 95 to 1, you've got great liquidity, so, so you're a very, very strong cash position, you should have no problem, you know, if you had a downturn for some reason, uh, you're in a very, very good position to ride out. Uh, so now, if we'll turn over to page 19, this is your budget to actual report. There are really a couple of things I'd like to point out, is revenues were up, if you take out the miscellaneous, uh, dollars, revenues were up about 20% year-over-year, and expenses were up about 10% year-over-year, so you're in a positive variance from your budget. So that's, that's very, very good. Then on the next page, page 20, this is your statement of net position, this is in equivalent to the balance sheet in the governmental funds we looked at a minute ago. We look at the same thing here as we did in the governmental fund, we look at your reserve, and we look at your rate current ratio, your current, your reserve and your, uh, what's called an enterprise fund, large super fund, is 101%. We recommend 33% in the enterprise fund. So again, you're well above the, the required, uh, reserve bank balance. Your current ratio is 4.43 to 1, so again, you're almost five times the current ratio that we recommend. Again, in your enterprise fund, you're still in a very, very strong cash position, your liquidity is very good.
And Wayne, if I could jump in just for one second, when Wayne's talking about that current ratio, like our cash relative to what our liabilities are, what we owe, nearly all of that is our deposits. So in other words, if every single person in the town walked in the door and asked for their deposit back, and no one else came in, everyone sold the house, no one took over their houses, we would have, we have four times as much money in the bank to cover that. That's a lot, we're good.
On page 21, uh, again, this is kind of your, your income statement, if you will, this got a long name at the top, statement of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund net position, sometimes I wonder how they come up with these names, but, uh, it's an income statement, basically, revenues to expenses. You have about a 6% uptick in revenues, and you have about a 3% uptick in expenses, so again, you're in a positive position, uh, with budget to actual, with your large super fund. And then, the last thing I wanna go on with you, you should have a little report, a separate report there, uh, just a two-page staple report. This is my letter to you, it's called a management, for governance, government's letter, and what this says is that there are things that we look at in the audit other than just quantitative. We look at, uh, whether you've got this segregation of dues, we look at, uh, documentation management, we look at file retention, we look at how easy it is to obtain something when we ask for it, uh, we look to make sure that you're following all of your design policies and procedures that you've set forth in your, in your city. Uh, we look to see if you made our adjustments before your audit, because there's always adjustments, appreciation, and so on and so forth. So we look to see, did you make our adjustments, or did you just, did those and decide not to make those adjustments? Sometimes it happens a little bit. Uh, and then we look at whether we had any disagreements with management while we were doing the audit. If, you know, it, I won't maybe argue easily, but sometimes those disagreements, and they, they get to be fairly heated sometimes. Uh, and then we look to see if, uh, you know, there are other things, like, uh, you know, were we able to obtain a document that we needed? Everything that we asked for, Linda and Mark had readily available, everything was well organized, uh, everything's where it should have been, and so it was, it was a very, very good clean audit, so you should be very pleased with the way the city did the audit. Uh, that's it for the audit report, but I'm happy to answer any questions specifically that you might have.
Well, you know, Wayne, I was only gonna, we knew, we started budgeting for the roads, you know, a year ago, and, uh, we have about a $400,000 gap, because we borrowed as little as possible in pace, so that's why we have a big fund balance, it was in anticipation of that gap.
Sure.
Um, and then, you know, so that is, we knew that was coming, right?
Well, that's, that's certainly a good balance strategy, um, and like I was saying a minute ago, you certainly have the right to, to do a planned spend out of those reserves, so if that was your plan all along, you certainly have the liquidity to it, uh, I'm not being concerned about that.
Or kind of our size, and I'm sure you work with other, maybe, counties, how do we compare?
That's kind of a general question, but, uh, is, is there something in particular that you do want to add?
Uh, I guess, I mean, you know, from your report, just that, I see, our audit looks pretty good, looks real good. Uh, compared to other towns, you know, of our size, you know, kinda how to...
I'd say you're at the top, or, I'd say you're, you're right, uh, you know, somebody made a comment earlier, uh, maybe it was back in 2009, that town was in the red, but, you know, I can remember the first year that I was with another firm at that time, we came in to audit, because there was a period, and I don't remember the exact year, but there was a period of time when the town was not auditable, and the firm that I was with was the firm that came in and told the town they were not auditable. And so, when, when Mark contacted us, you know, said, hey, we, we would like to, to have an audit done, and he had, he had gone through and done a cadre of comprehensive annual bank financial reviews, and that is a very, very complex document. Uh, so, for somebody to take the initiative to do that showed us a lot, and of course, we came in, um, and audited, and everything was, was good. And, uh, your books were in order, uh, you know, everybody has questions from time to time, and that's, that's not what I'm getting at, you know, Linda will, will call me on occasion with a question about something, and that's perfectly fine. Uh, but, but she always makes sure that if something wasn't exactly right, that it gets corrected. So, you know, the, the value of having a nice clean set of books is that the state whatever, you know, decided to come in, and it makes it a lot easier for them, it's not easy. Um, you know, I know this is governmental, but I work with the IRS on a daily basis, when they come in, is the books are in good shape, boy, the audit 's over real quick, if the books are in bad shape, it's spending a lot of time. So, no, I would say that you're, that you're definitely in top. So the town was auditable, way back in, it's auditable because they were keeping records, and that's correct, records were not there, but there was really no evidential matter to base an opinion on.
Yeah, that's not good. That was a hard year. I bet you had a lot to do that year.
The year I worked on it, yeah.
And if you, you know, I always say this, uh, everyone's taking up on it, but any time you have a question about something, feel free to call me, I always welcome to talk to you, so, uh, nothing wrong with that. I, I think there's something that, uh, you know, that we should talk about, I'll tell you, but, you know, most of the time it's not.
So let me, let me throw in a technical question then, Wayne. So you must be dealing with this COVID relief funds kinda stuff, but that doesn't trigger anything, right? Because we're not getting enough money to trigger any kind of federal grant we're reporting, right?
No, it's, you know, the, the thing is that if you, as long as you don't have more than $750,000 in any one year of federal expenditures, then you don't have to undergo what's called a simple audit.
Okay.
Uh, that probably will never happen to you, you know, uh, but if it does, you know, that's, that's fine. But you can, you can actually, uh, you know, have, you can actually get grant money from federal government, and it could be more than $750,000, you just can't spend more than $750,000 in any one year of it without being, kind of go through a special audit.
Okay.
That kind of audit is really complex sometimes.
So Eric, keep it under 750.
That's right.
Get us a grant. Great. Any else have any questions?
Me.
I'll spare you while I will ask no more.
Thank you.
I'll call you.
We all appreciate that.
All right, very good, uh, so...
We appreciate it.
Uh, Linda, come here, do we, do we actually vote to accept the audit, do we actually do something, we don't do anything, right? I know there's not a...
I would likely to.
Normally, we, I thought we normally vote, most cities vote to accept the audit report, it's, so, I think...
Not voting to approve it, you're starting to...
No, we accept it, yeah, we vote to accept it. So, all right, Serena has the motion to accept the audit report?
Okay.
Eric's got the second, all those in favor? Okay. Wayne, hey, well done, sir.
Thank you.
Again, appreciate it, Wayne. All right, sir.
Next year I'll...
After you undo all those temporary accounts you set up, undo them all next year, okay?
Yeah, we will.
There you go.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you, I'm sorry, Wayne, there you go.
You all have a great...
What's this, Steve?
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
All right, have a good holiday, Steve.
I gotta check my... And you, gotta make sure those people, uh, sleep.
All right, next, uh, oh, I have one, uh, I have one thing on the, uh, on the audit, so I added one thing, uh...
On what?
On the audit?
On the audit, I added something.
This is the last slide, you need the footmarks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, so, um, this is actually in the packet, but, um, so one of the things that I look at, so when I look at the, when I look at the audit report, I, there's two things I snapshot on are, one is, what's our cash balance in the city side? Because that's driven by taxes, you know, where are we, um, on that? Um, the second thing I look at very closely is, on the utility side, I look at the cash flow. What's our cash flow after we pay our expenses? That's called cash flow from operations. So it's before your CapEx, it's before any bond payments, it's just, how much money do you take into the utility system, how much did you spend on chlorine and the operator and the repairs, and just the general stuff to run it, and what do you have left? Because for us, we don't borrow money in the utility fund, so we self-generate our own cash. So we put in that water tower next door, we paid for that with cash, we didn't borrow money. That line on the other side, there's a 12-inch main and all the fire hydrants, is over $100,000. We didn't borrow that money, we used our reserves for that. So we self-fund all of our projects. So because we're self-funding them, the cash flow is really important, because if you don't generate the cash, you can't do the project. So, in the last couple of years, I've come to the council, I've asked for certain things, like the water rates, to, to reset some of the rates, and we've talked about that. So, this is an example to show you that back in 2017, for example, um, we took in, we, our revenues were about 315, 316, but we had $60,000 in operating cash flows, we had $60,000 to pay our bills. Now, one of the things that we do then is we transfer $50,000 to the city. To the city, there's an admin fee, so the, the utility fund transfers $50,000 a year over to the city to pay for Linda and the bookkeeping and the bill paying and the mowing and the insurance and the audit, and it's a big massive spreadsheet, okay? So, as you can tell, in 2017, we only had $60,000 in cash, and yet we took out $103,000 in CapEx. We were hugely negative that year. That was a brutal year, but the reason why is because we had well problems. That was the year we had the well issues, so our revenues were not good, and at the same time, we were paying a lot of money to drop the wells, get the new storage tank, get all that stuff squared away, okay? So in 2018, things got better, so we made about $93,000 in cash flow, almost $94,000, and we spent $50,000 in CapEx, and again, another $50,000 went to the city. So essentially, we kinda broke even. Well, at that point, we were really talking about the roads. Okay, now we're talking about accelerating the roads, right? Because we're, we're coming up, that was, we couldn't do anything with the bonds for five years, well now, about 2014, we're in the five-year window now. Well, that's when I came to you guys, looking forward, like, we know we're gonna have to move lines, we're gonna have to get stuff under the street, and that's now or never, it's do or die in a lot of this stuff, and, you know, we gotta get it done, so we're gonna need the money to do that, and so that's why we started adjusting the rates to make them a little bit more in line. We're still 30% below everybody, all the other cities, but we're not 70% below everybody. And you can see, oh, look at, see what happened to our cash flow, went from 93 up to 191 to 220. So the cash flow is strong, and that's what we want now, so we've got really strong cash flow. We spent $144,000 this last year on CapEx, but $100,000 of that was the water line. The other amount was redoing the lift station on Kerry, rerouting the lift station to take the load off of stone, which now turns out to be great because we can flip the valve and we're, we're moving those lines over there. We actually don't have to worry about the service, we just flip a valve and we can reroute everything without turning anybody off on the sewer system. So, so that was a big amount that we spent last year, but we're now in the process of accumulating cash, okay? Now, this year should be the best year ever, and we're pretty much done with our CapEx. So now, the cash we're gonna accumulate, why are we gonna keep accumulating cash now? Because now we're looking down the road, what are we gonna... Because now we're looking down the road, what are we gonna do with another well? Or, you know, other expansion things, you know, we might have to run a, a water line across the street or a sewer line, you know, et cetera. But, but I just wanted you to see, you know, part of what we're trying to do here is get out ahead of the stuff, right? We were down to about seventy thousand dollars in cash in the utility fund in two thousand eighteen. Then we had about seventy thousand left. Well, that wasn't gonna cause us any problem, but that means we couldn't do much CapEx unless we changed the rates. We had to generate the cash flow. Because again, we self-fund. What most cities do is they just kind of roll along and then when the big project comes, they borrow money. You just go to the bank, borrow the money, and then add it on to the rates, right?
Much better to save it ahead of time.
Exactly. So we're, we're very conservative in that we like to do it the old-fashioned way, you know, save it up, pay cash out of pocket and don't take out a loan, you know, unless we have to. Uh, the other thing I'll say, uh, is that, uh, and I don't want anybody to interpret this the wrong way, but our bond payments, part of that bond payment and our double A credit rating is the fact that we have a very strong utility system with no debt. We're very rare in that our utilities have no debt in them. And according to our bond agreement, we're allowed to use this money to make a bond payment. Now, we're not going to, but it's always nice to know.
It's an safety valve in case something.
If the world ended tomorrow, that we have this money is part of our pledge for our double A rating. But, but again, so you can see, it's a lot of forward-looking, right? A lot of what we're trying to do here is get out in front of stuff. We want to be proactive and not reactive down the road. So I just wanted you to see, it, it's working perfectly. This is exactly as we anticipated. It's right according to plan. It, okay?
Are there, are there rules and regulations, like, what's one for, but they're not using it? Like, do we have to be inserted with our account?
All, all useful money can be used. The only thing that you're, you can't do is like bond money. Like the, the interest, um, the IAF, the part of your debt servicing, like in your property taxes, that can only be used to pay bonds. But you're allowed to use any funds inside the city for any purpose that is a city purpose. What, what gets other cities in trouble, and this used to happen, this happened a few times in California, is that on the city side, they were paying the city administrator four hundred thousand dollars a year, council members were being paid three hundred thousand dollars a year, and they, they couldn't raise the tax rate. So they started raiding the utility funds. They were using the utility, yeah, to pay city salaries, to pay firefighters and all this. And the, and the citizens went, went crazy because, you know, taxes you could vote on.